Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order at six thirty. Eric, would you like to do roll call first?
Roll call, so I'll just go into what I got listed here. Hanley?
Yeah.
Gambiani?
Here.
Cordray?
Here.
McNally?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Okay, we'll move into the meeting minutes from our last meeting, which was October twenty-third. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes. Is there any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. You're a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, it is consecutive, to approve the minutes as approved or as presented. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. So next we get into the communications and we'll turn that over to Eric.
Okay, the first topic there is the work group to discuss short-term rentals. We're gonna talk about it under Old Business a little bit as well, but I'm trying to link it all together. I distributed the Commercial Building Code in a Google format, I also have it in the packet. And that is what the Ohio Building Code said, the rules for a short-term rental. And what I would like to do is include this group in a process to set within our resolution, or at least under Home Rule, or guidelines, as to what we should do for short-term rentals. So I think it's important that we do that as a group, we all have input into it, that way everyone's kind of aware and it's not just a, hey, here's what we're gonna do and handing it down. I think it's important for us to have input, write that procedure. I just wanna remind everyone, as I talked about in the last meeting, and I'll say it again, we cannot reduce the requirement that is in the Ohio Building Code. We can make it more restrictive, which may be something we need to look at, maybe it's something we don't need to look at. We may just agree, you know what, we'll just follow the Ohio Building Code and be done with it. And we can do that, I just feel that we should research a little bit, find out kind of what's going on, I can discuss complaints, anything that's happening right now. I know that there was a news article regarding a short-term rental, and I think that was in Bath, Ohio? And there was an incident that occurred there. So, right after that, I've got a couple of phone calls of people asking, what is our process for short-term rentals? So, it wasn't, I don't think a news inquiry, it was just people, hey, I'm thinking about buying this property and turn it into an Airbnb, what's your process, can I do that? So, I refer them to, here's the sites, here's what you would need to follow in order to do that, through the Ohio Building Code. But I think it would be better for all of us to have something to say, we adopted, we're including the Ohio Building Code and this is what our rules and regulations are, if that makes sense. So, what I'd like to do is begin next year in our meetings, and we'll hold our regular meetings, but we'll make those work group meetings. So, we need to have a public record of, do we have this meeting, so it will be recorded, but that way anybody that's interested can see what's going on, what's going on with our meetings, and then we can make our decisions from there, and then I'll write a proposal up and we'll go from there.
Okay, so what you're proposing is that we would follow this meeting schedule for as long as it takes us to complete the work of the work group?
Correct.
Okay.
But that's our regular schedule.
That's our regular schedule.
I just think I would like to incorporate it in our regular meeting schedule.
What are the A and B notations on the first two pages in the margins there?
Just referencing to the sections on that, so the original information that I received was from our CBO, our commercial building official, he's the one that pulled those codes for me, that's his application, they were still out, there's a highlighted section as to what they would complete for a short-term rental, it was just merely definitions and what the Ohio Building Code references to the sites that the short terminals follow.
So on the first page you gave us, that's merely just showing us a definition of...
Correct, because the Building Code refers to a short-term rental and the occupants of that is a transient. So, just defining what transient is, what would be a transient lodging structure, that's what that pretends. And then B is transient lodging structures, and then it goes through to define what that would do. So, it's not a hotel, it's a residence, it's those kind of things, and then requirements that must be met if it is a short-term rental.
Eric?
Yeah.
Last meeting, either you or the lawyer for the township had mentioned like number of days, like thirty days.
Correct.
Is that in what you've given us, or is that like an example of what we would like the working group to look at? Or like...
Isn't that in the definition of transient?
It is in the definition, thirty, no, it was thirty.
Yeah, occupancy of a dwelling unit or sleeping unit were not more than thirty days. So, as a colleague said, it was thirty-one days, or if it was two months, it doesn't fall into that category. And that's something that us as a group would probably need to take a look at, do we want to say, hey, ninety days, do we want to say six months? Those are where we can make it more restrictive to say, hey, we would follow this process.
Is that something that can be think, or does that fall under than like a long-term scenario?
So, as it stands right now, it wouldn't fall under that.
Right.
It would just be your running it, but we could, as a group, say, hey, make our, the process more restrictive to say, we're gonna make it ninety days, or we're gonna make it something else.
Are there any grandfathering, like grandfathered short-term rentals, or we can obviously set up a more strict process around like registration of your short-term rental, but for existing short-term rentals that already are within the neighborhood, they class outside of this, that's probably just something that needs to be researched more than anything, in my opinion, but...
I can't answer that, I don't know the answer to that, but I mean, I'd be happy to bring that up to lawyers and say, hey, how would we handle this situation? But you're correct, we need to come up with a process.
Right.
Do we have any sense of how many dwellings might be out there in Blenheim Township that would qualify as a, as a short-term rental?
I do not have that answer, I don't know. I don't know, I mean, we could probably go in and say, hey, Airbnbs in Blenheim Township and maybe find out how they're out there, that's something...
But we don't have a registration process or anything like that.
Right, right. So, but what we...
Complicated.
We could include in that, it sure does, is how we're gonna handle these. So, are we gonna be reactive or proactive? So, we get a complaint about something, we'll follow up with it. Do we actively go out and research it? Those are things that I wanna discuss as a group, how we should move forward with that and what the consensus would be on that. Westerville does it on basically a complaint base. Other jurisdictions may, you know, if they find out about it, they'll inquire about it.
Well, I think the City of Columbus has a registration requirement, because I think there's, there's a fee that has to be paid too.
Yeah, that was, you'd have to work out a fee schedule too, both for registration and for penalization.
Right, it's basically just checking a box, is what they're doing. So, whether they're following the Building Code or not, I don't know that. You would assume yes, but you know what happens when you assume? So, it's just merely checking a few boxes, I mean, I went through and looked at it, I didn't try to log in to register, do something, but it was basically, hey, did you meet this requirement? Yep.
Now, what are you talking about?
This is almost outside of Building Code, isn't it?
So, when you go to the City of Columbus to register for that, it's basically checking a box on your application.
Sure.
Well, Columbus also has a hundred-and-eighty days limit, plus, I mean, I was looking on their, looking up all that crap on their site, and they have a hundred-and-eighty days minimum, but then if there's a problem, you know, the neighbor, whoever's supposed to call Airbnb and file complaint about it, well, that seems somewhat, kind of defeats the purpose to me. But, I mean, Columbus has a set of rules, regulations, as far as occupancy, as far as ownership of the property, that whoever is doing the Airbnb thing has to be, has to be their primary residence. Now, that's what's in Columbus. So, it's not just that anybody in your local, you know, buy a piece of property and say, okay, poof, you know, I'm gonna put it in an LLC somewhere, and it's not primary or anything, it's just somebody else owns it, but I don't live there. Well, Columbus says, no, it has to be, you have to be, your name has to be on the deed of the property. So, something just to, you know, throw up in the air.
I'm not sure that that's exactly true. I mean, I have a client who owns several properties that he owns in different LLCs, and seventy-five percent of the folks in them are short-term rentals. So, unless he's breaking the law, which is a possibility.
No.
Which is a possibility. He ain't Italian, but he...
If you only sign a short-term rental for ninety days or a hundred-and-twenty days, then you don't, you wouldn't have to worry about it anyway. So, that's like the other, if they have a half a year, you sign those short-term rentals for the shorter lease term, and then you just are fine, then you can do whatever you want. So, it's just a way to work it.
Yeah.
You never know.
Yeah. I had no, the City of Columbus was that, was six months, that's a surprise.
That's what I said on our website, so...
No, I believe you.
The internet wouldn't lie to us, though.
Yeah.
That's pretty much all I had on that, the other questions, and again, I think that including everyone, we can pull up whatever research, I mean, that's great information. Went a little more in-depth with the City of Columbus, looking at that, but we'll check a few of the other ones out, and if we can make it our own, we can be independent of everyone else, however it is, as long as we're following what the Ohio Building Code says, we're good to go.
The, if I, I'll make the last comment, that I'm gonna make. I don't like, I'm not fond of making rules around exceptions, and I feel like we're dealing with an exception situation. Am I, am I off-base?
Say that again.
Right.
Yeah, I, if the, do we have enough occurrences to spend time putting all this together? Or is it something that raises its ugly head, you know, once every six months?
Isn't that part of our research, to determine the scope?
I suppose.
Of the issue?
Yeah, well, that's fine, I don't know how we do that, but that would be a challenge since we'd have no...
Go on Airbnb and you can search.
Okay, no misunderstanding. Tim said about being proactive, you know, I'd rather be in front of the horse than be behind it. So, I mean, yeah, valid point. I mean, you know, we may be chasing, you know, chasing a ghost or something, but come Halloween, that sucker's pop up again, why?
I will say that in like the Huber Ridge neighborhoods, Glengarry Heights, it is more of an issue.
Okay.
The sales and the flips are a lot of the time turning into that, and so that is where a lot of the complaints are, there are a few in some very woods as well, but certainly not with the prominence that there are in the Huber Ridge and Glengarry Heights areas.
Yeah.
And, you know, I know just looking at old London documents, that the percentage of owned and lived-in homes compared to renting, the renting has increased, and so if the renting has increased, you know, then like at some point, the short-terms are also increasing. And then, you know, like the opiate relief money, the settlement money from the opiates, a big effort in the state of Ohio is on more like sober livings, and sober livings, you know, because of the clientele, tend to be more transient, right? Because if they violate their contract to live in there, they can't live there anymore. You know, so like, do we, you know, so like, there may be a problem, we don't know, as well.
Yeah. That's fine, I'm good.
I would like to be able to put it on our website, under, if you're applying for this, short-term rental, define it and then say, here's the process to do it. Like I said, as it stands right now, I just refer to the...
Yeah, is this kinda what you're using for that example?
That's the application itself, through our commercial building official, and he's highlighted on, I think it's like the third page of that. Look who put off for that. And there's a lot of requirements that must be met in order to meet that, so, I didn't cut off the entire section of it, but, yes, it's, that's the application. Also attached to that is a fee schedule, right off the bat, they would have to give you the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar deposit, and then depending upon how many inspections, whatever actions it would be taking, we would include, of course, include that in our fee schedule. But because it's a short-term rental, it falls under the commercial building side of it, which is long-term, which I got...
We'll start that on January twentieth.
Yes, I'd like to. You can't have an extra one, though.
Okay.
Deadline for work, I just filled it, I think a working group would be a better way to handle it.
Well, they asked this, if there's not enough of those folks here, can we still do it ad hoc here? I mean, just...
Is there a forum?
As long as we have a forum, we can still move forward, sure.
Okay. We just can, go down to the local watering hole and have a couple and talk about it, right?
Before forum, we were not allowed to do that.
Sunshine Law involved in that.
Okay, we're good with number one there?
Yes.
Okay. On to number two, is the Blenheim Township zoning commission vacancy for the alternate member. I just wanna make sure I do some clarification, Tim is still the alternate member until the end of the year. It's not, he's not an alternate member now, he's through the end of the year. But we did post the vacancies, were allowed up to two, that's posted on our website, inquiries of interest will be accepted until December fifth. I think we have four by that, so far, people showing interest in doing. That's my update on that.
Will this election be made while Tim is still our active alternate?
I would venture to say no, but I don't know that answer, because I don't make that decision. It's the current board trustees that make that decision, so, I would encourage you to send an email maybe to Pat and say, hey, seeking clarification. That way you're not hearing it from me, you heard it from him. Fair response?
That's fair.
Okay.
All right, so then we'll move into Old Business?
Again, that was distributed to OBC sites regarding short-term rentals.
Right.
I handed out it before we were over tonight, so I just wanna, I listened to Old Business because it's something we discussed the last meeting, so, but we've kinda beat it to death.
Okay, so we can move into the International Property Code?
Yes. So, the International Property Maintenance Code, in your packet, that I handed out, during our last meeting, I said, hey, I'm trying to find what changes have been made, and kinda what's going on, and I was able to do a couple of things. I have the two thousand nine, which we follow now, and then Adam had the two thousand twenty-one Property Maintenance Code, and then I sent away and got the twenty twenty-four Property Maintenance Code. So, we went through and said, hey, what's really changed in these? Is there a lot that's gonna affect how we adopt to that and what's gonna happen with us? There really wasn't, there were some changes, but it's like fire code, that kind of stuff. So, in your packet, it is after all of the short-term rental information, it will be page...
Is it this one?
Just the up page.
The fourth page back, Dyke McBride's general overview of the updated various language changes and additions, subtractions of each of the updates, from two thousand twelve through twenty twenty-four. And it's just a high-level overview, but copyright, like I said, you can't just copy stuff and say, hey, here's what changed in it. So, these are just some of the, some of the changes. Two thousand fifteen, two thousand twelve to fifteen talks about the fire protection system, again, it's brought up again in two thousand eighteen. That seems to be the biggest changes in it, they reworded a few things, and then we can, if you're interested, I don't know that we need to do it tonight, but we can by all means, we can look at whatever section we were in, what accessibility means, that was a, the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four was accessible. Those are just some of the changes that were made, I know if you were to go on and say, what's your property maintenance code, and we say two thousand nine, you'd think, well, that's really outdated. I think that if you would log into it and say, hey, twenty twenty-four, okay, you're more up to speed in kinda what's going on. Was there really a lot of changes that's gonna affect us here in the township? Not really. There are some changes, but not anything that would yield much really on a basis, it'd be more fire code, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
And...
Can you expand on non-potable water reuse system?
Include that?
Like how, in twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen, I don't know whether you can or can't, honestly, just non-potable water reuse system, and what that might or might not include? It's the second line in.
Non-potable water reuse system. Kind of like septic system? Or a campground that had, where you dump your black tanks, your tank? That's gotta recycle somewhere, I would imagine.
Why, I know it does.
Non-potable means you can't drink it, so...
Right.
I don't know about in Ohio, but I know in Florida, they, they use a lot of non-potable water to irrigate golf courses.
That was kinda where I was getting at.
Yeah. Some of the astronauts, some of the astronauts up at the space station, so...
Yeah, so, I mean, if you're looking at that as, is this your rain barrel at the corner of your gutter? Or do you have a system that irrigates your garden? I'm just curious, that's why I specifically ask.
Off the top of my head, no, but I'll research it and send an email out. I'm looking at the definitions, even to see if it's mentioned on there, but...
I'll let you guys talk about it later.
Yeah, and it mentions in the phrase abandonment of systems.
Right, so I mean, for me, that would lead to septic more specifically than anything, but I'm just curious how broad that definition is. Good thing we're near.
Don't have to shovel rain.
Pretty crazy last night I was here for something, too.
Five, there was five, five. Non-potable water reuse system, non-potable water reuse systems and rainwater collection and conveyance systems shall be maintained in a safe and sanitary condition. Where such systems are not properly maintained, the system shall be repaired to provide for safe and sanitary conditions, or the system shall be abandoned in accordance with Section five oh five point one. The five oh five point one is abandonment of systems where a non-potable water reuse system or rainwater collection and distribution system is not maintained, or the owner ceases use of the system, the system shall be abandoned in accordance with Section thirteen oh one point one zero, the International Plumbing.
Sorry, I didn't realize we were gonna go down the whole rabbit hole of codes.
We went down, so we're halfway there, but if I, I don't have the, one of the...
Two. Spanish, best three.
I think that's an important point to look at, because if somebody's not maintaining their rain barrels, you could have all kinds of mosquitoes and bugs and all kinds of...
Good question and good happy answer.
Look at my backyard, now.
So, you know, that's what, that's what that is, again, that is under the Home Rule, and I provided a copy of the Home Rule at the last time that it was basically adopted. It misses the two thousand nine International Property Maintenance Code, again, everybody's updated with that, with twenty twenty-four, but again, I'm still, it's important to share, hey, here's kinda what the changes are gonna be, so that we're aware of it.
So...
We've dug deeper into those... So we've dug deeper into those, um, you can't send this out, uh, but you're welcome to, uh, meet with me. We can go over if you'd like.
Is there a best practice on how often it should get updated by like a township, you know?
I don't know the answer to that. Westerville works until the 2021.
Yeah.
It's updated every three years. So I think if there was a major change, you'd probably wanna look at. At making a revision, especially, um, your larger municipalities and that kinda stuff, but, um, I don't know that. It's earth-shattering that we change it every three years, but I, I just, if 2024 is available, why not make it the most current and go from there?
What do we have to do to do that?
Are you just suggesting an, an updated resolution, like a rescind the old one and then present a, a new one that we recommend?
So we, we wouldn't have to recommend it at all in this meeting. It's all through Home Rule, um, so they can do that on their own, but I feel it was important to share that information.
Cause information for us. Okay, so there's no action?
No.
Well, it'll come up in trustee meetings, so, um.
Right.
Good.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, uh, we've finished. Anyone else have anything on the international property code? Let's move into new business. Uh, Eric did provide a copy of the, uh, proposed 2026 meeting dates.
I sent those out a little bit ahead of time. If, um, there's an incorrect date or anything on there, you know, I think that, I tried to follow everything and make sure I didn't hit any holidays or anything, but, um, I should, should follow through to one, um.
I looked at.
I did look at them and they all look to be five to eighteen.
Um, I'll offer a motion to approve the 2026 zoning commission meeting schedule.
And I'll second. Uh, so there's, uh, motion on the floor. And it's been seconded to approve the, uh, proposed 2026 blended township zoning commission meeting schedule as presented. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So let's move into our last item on the agenda. To propose to cancel the December meeting, barring any new issues arise prior to the next meeting. I don't even know what the date is. Do you know what it is?
I didn't look at that one, sorry. I feel like it's the week of the twenty.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth. Oh, okay. Okay. So there's a proposal. But is there a motion?
I'll move. I'll second.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor and it's been seconded to cancel the December meeting, barring any new issues arise prior to that scheduled date.
Lot of words, huh?
We've already discussed. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion carries. No December meeting unless something major comes up. Uh, is there any other, um, anyone have anything else they would like to bring before the Lord, not on the agenda?
Yeah, I, I have something. So last year, you know, we had a little bit more, um, people before us to approve. And one was that car dealership on, um, Cleveland Avenue, uh, where they wanted the interior block rezoned so they could sell cars in the interior block. You know, and, um, and they were told during that meeting that, you know, when it got rezoned, they would be immediately out of compliance with the zoning as it relates to the landscaping requirements and, and, um, you know, mostly that. And they told us that we're gonna build a fence and do different things. And, you know, I live on that side of the township and, you know, so I see it every day. And, um, and I just wanna bring it to everyone's attention. They haven't done any of that, um, that they told us, you know, when they were here before us. And, um, and I know we're like a zoning, a zoning and planning, you know, but, um, and, you know, we also had the, um.
Isn't there an issue with the.
The storage. Yeah, the, you know, the, they're shining these lights right into residents', you know, properties. And, um, they're like, seem very bright, you know, and things like that. But we also had, this zoning board commission had, um, that storage facility that's right around the corner on, um, Westerville Road. And they, they too, like, told us, you know, for their application that they were gonna, if they got it zoned, they were gonna do, they were gonna move the cars to the back and they'd have the rooms to be that. You know, they, they haven't done that. Um, so, you know, as we like go into next year, it's just, um, this is what it raises that, you know, we've had two things that we spent time on. People told us they would do X and they, they haven't.
How long has this been going on?
Well, this, you know, for us, you know, this.
Well, yeah, for you guys, yeah.
It, it was when Adam was still, uh, zoning director, so a lot of that probably.
So he does the follow-up on that.
Eric probably really doesn't have any idea about what, what they told us. Um, but yeah, I mean, those are probably follow-up points, I guess.
Well, not any time, years, months, days?
Right. That's not something that zoning, as far as like, as the committee can really dictate, I believe. But we were, but that was part of the, hey, if we're willing to allow, you know, all of these changes, what can we expect? Would you be bringing these properties to what our codes expect? So I, I just don't, like, I know we can't dictate that you make those changes, but then it comes down to, okay, do we, do we then say, hey, you did say this, now we have to bring.
Well, I'm hearing it's a compliance issue.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, well, I'm, I'm only, I'm raising it only partially as a compliance issue, as, you know, but just also as, um, you know, like the storage facility, like, what are we doing here? You know, we, um, you know, every sucker's given, you know, approving the rezoning off their plan and then they don't follow through.
Where does the, where does the enforcement come from?
That would be through us, the zoning.
Right.
Zoning. Um, this is the first I'm hearing about it, so I'm sorry, um, you know. Please email me, please send me something so I know what I'm, what I'm gonna deal with. Um, I'll research it to find out what was agreed to. Maybe there's some minutes from those meetings or something, or whatever they approved, and I can say, hey, you didn't follow through on it. Cause, um, there's three car dealerships on Cleveland Avenue.
Yeah.
There's one that has the paved lot, which was, I remember that being approved. There's another one that is good news, that's not paved, it's gravel. It has a fence around it, though. Um, that was approved a long time ago.
This one's on the east side, if I remember correctly.
And then, um, there's another one that's, um, not zoned to be a car lot at all, um, and we're working on that one.
Well, okay, was there a variance involved in this, or do you recall?
Well, not, not with us. You know, and we were told, like, we, we don't have the authority to do, like, conditional use.
Right. So you could rezone an area to allow for whatever, so whatever business they have, so, um, the apartment complex, that was, um, zoned R24. It would already been previously are zoned R24. The section down here where sheets and all that's at, is that what you're talking about, the storage?
Yeah.
That was rezoned.
It was, yes. It was rural before, so it was really loose.
Yeah. Um, it's like industrial now or something, I can't remember. But anyhow, um, that's the only ones that I can recall that I remember seeing something on it, but, um, I'll look at the zoning map and, um, I'll figure it out. Yeah, if you don't mind, just email me, call me, whatever, send me a message and you'll know. And I'll research and see if I can find minutes or something from it. I'll be happy to follow up.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we do. Per my God.
Your main, well, maybe not your main, at least half of your point was, spent a lot of time on this and we wanna make sure that we have some sort of a return, I guess, on, on the time that we invest and, and what we're seeing. I, I assume.
Yeah, cause you know, we're going off the, the people's word and, you know, what they say they're gonna do and, and like, they're not, they're not doing it.
Yeah, you guys would have rezoned it and then the zoning side of it would say, you know, approve for this, and these are the stipulations for it. So, um, those, and I'll be happy to look into that. Some of the old stuff, it was not electronic. It's in a file box. So you have to try to narrow it down to a month or something so you can go back and pull it.
Well, the one, the car one, that one, the, uh, car lot one, that's inside of a year.
Yeah. I mean, it should be pretty close to that. And there should be minutes, and if not, I may have a recording.
Yeah, now, well, the, the minutes, I remember that one, like, the minutes got, like, redone. That had some of the conversation with, um, the applicant, yeah.
Okay, I appreciate it. I'll, I'll check into it.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, it was, it was a pleasure. It was the last meeting I'll be at, so, the pleasure with you guys. We, we went through some weird stuff, but had a great time, learned a lot. Great time, most of the time.
And congratulations.
Congratulations.
You were very beneficial to this board.
It was, uh, I brought a lot of paperwork during those early days. Those, those lot sizes.
Yeah.
That was a, that was a fun one. But more people.
You had to knock a forty lot?
Yeah, I came in with packets. Before we had packets. Like, I appreciate you guys' birthday.
Okay, um, not hearing any additional comments or discussion. I'm, um, moved to adjourn. Anybody want a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you all. Happy holidays.